We encourage continue to do the work of the Lord.
Aina krupu manaki sarupoyenidiga unnantavarko mari aina karyamla manu procha inchibadi aditek aina karyamla munduku sagavalsnavaaramga untna.
When he gives us some responsibility.
Mari prabhu manaku koni baajatala apagistana apudu.
He also gives us necessary strength to do that work.
Mari ye baajatala itte prabhu manuka apaginchinadu, a baajata neravachchidanik kavaltna shaktini kodaa aina anugreenchavaduka unchinnadu.
Without that, he will never ask us to do anything.
Mari aina shaktini evukonda, a baajatenu chae mani manaku prabhu chapadu.
Disciples were asked to go and preach the whole word, the gospel of the Lord.
Mari yesu prabhu varaka sishilaku sarvalokumnu kuvelli sarosustiki swarta pragatinchman aina cheppinapadu.
So having given that commission and responsibility.
Mari ayaka baajata pani varika apaginchinapadu.
And he also gave them strength, the promise of his presence with him, with them.
Mari varik kodaa apanichedanik kavaltna shaktini aina sannidi kodaa varutha kodaa untundani devadu vaagdham chesnada.
Matthew's Gospel.
Mate swarta.
Chapter twenty-eight.
28.
Verse twenty.
28.
Teaching them to observe all things whatsoever I have commanded you, and lo, I am with you always, even unto the end of the world.
Neenamikya esangatala agyapinchitna, watani ni gaykonichu, kaavat pandam dachinam, kaavatimiru, veli 28. Neenamikya esangatala agyapinchitna, watani gaykonvalani variki bodinchidhi, idigone neenu yuga samapthi varaku sadakalam meetha kodaa unnanani varutha cheppeno.
Lo, I am with you always.
Idigone neenu yuga samapthi varaku sadakalam meetha kodaa unnanani cheppeno.
He knows their weakness.
Variyaka balahinathino aina eriginavadu.
He knows their temperament.
Variyaka balahinathino ayaka aina eriginavadu.
He knows their shortcomings.
Mari variyaka koratala aina eriginatvanti var.
That's why he gave this promise, lo, I am with you always.
Akaarnanabati vaagdhanamayana varikichnada, idigone neenu yuga samapthi varaku sadakalam meetha kodaa unnanu.
Therefore, he linked his omnipotence to their importance or weakness.
Mari variyaka balahinathilo akaarnanabati aina shaktini varkanugristavachinadu.
And thus as a way to the word of God, they are linked with heaven.
Mari ariithiga varu devanu vaakyamnu kuvavagthananu lowbodra dhvara paralokumta var anusandhanam cheyavatunna.
They are connected to heaven.
Var paralokumta anusandhanam cheyavatunna.
From there, they received that power of God to do the work of the Lord.
Mari a paralokumnunchi devanipanichedaniki kavalsna devanisshaktini varpundithavachinadu.
Whatever we do, it is not we that we are doing and getting some results.
Mari ye daite manu prabhu koraku chesstnamo adi manam chesstnadhi manam kadu.
It is God who helps us.
Mari devade manaku dani chedaniki sahayam chesstnada.
It is you who does those things.
Mari aine a karyal chesstunchinadu.
They are only the instruments in his hands.
Mari aina chetelo manu panimutlu maatrame.
We see around us mansions built everywhere.
Mari manu vichittu anega grohala katindudha chustnam.
Ah, multi-storied buildings.
Mari padh padh bavanaalu katunai.
High skyscrapers.
Mari entho etainatvanti buildingsu.
Ah, who has done it?
Mari yavra watni chesse katara.
Massens have done it.
Mari ayaka taapi mesrala watni katinar.
And masses, in the hand of the masses, there is an instrument called, in Telugu called taapi.
Mari ayaka taapi mesral chetelo taapi untundi.
Yeah, you know that, no?
Andarikidil.
With that, he builds.
Mari ayaka taapi to aina chesstavachinadu.
Without that, he cannot do it.
A taapi lakapote, a taapi mesri emichu.
He cannot do it with the hand.
Mari tanachetu to dani chailadu.
He needs that taapi.
A taapi panichedan tanaka avasramay.
He has that taapi in the skillful hands of the mass, and there came the mansion.
Kaavati ayaka taapi mesreka nai punyamuto tanachetelona taapi to ayaka etainak katidal katkalukuthavachinadu.
And they are not, the taapi cannot take credit to it.
Mari aite a taapi neenantat neene katanaantav chappukojal.
Aina chesnanjudu.
Neen chesnanjudan.
Aina lakpothi jaragadu.
Neen lakpothi jaragadu.
So taapi cannot do any.
Aite manu a taapi tanantarthaane vatri gachailadu.
Without the mass, taapi is useless.
Kaavat ayaka taapi mesrala lakonda, a taapi anedi nirupiyogamu.
Charles Spurgeon, who is the, who is called the king of the speakers in England.
Mari England lo Charles Spurgeon anega mari bodakaluku razi gopilavatunadu.
He used to always carry one gloves with him.
Mari ellapadu tanathapadu glovesu patikunavallavadu.
You keep it on the table.
Mari table meda glovesu pettavadu.
Invariably, he will give an example connecting with that.
Mari ekadu velna dani kisa sammaninchinatvanti odaharana aina chepptundavadu.
See, this is lying here.
Mari ikkada ye glovesu undichodandi.
Inactive.
Mari dani kiyevidamana chalanam ledhu.
It cannot do anything.
Adi emichailadu.
Then he will take the glove.
Mari taravata glovesu tiskunavadu.
And put his hands in it.
Mari a danu la aina chaypettavadu.
Fingers in it.
Veel pettavadu.
And then he moves.
Taravata danu lakkadipavadu.
And then gloves also is moving.
Gloves kodapadu kadiledu.
So he said, if I take out these fingers, that again it is lifeless.
Mari ye veel andlo inchitisevasta adi adi nirjavanga untundi.
We are that gloves and we are that taapi.
Mari manameyaka glovesu ye taapi ane.
Whatever that we do.
Maname emichesstana apaduki.
Don't take pleasure and take credit and lift up your collar.
Mari manu collar akkeshi neene chesstnaman epudu manu manuko kodadu.
I always say.
Neen ellapadu cheptha untna.
If some soul is saved in the church.
Mari mandrumle yavranakavaktrakshinabundite.
That preacher cannot take the credit for that.
Mari bodakudu neene aina rakshinchinana anuko kodadu.
You know why?
Enduku?
That assembly is praying for the salvation of the souls.
Endukanaka a sangamo a vekta rakshnakoraku pradhancheshtavachinadu.
Eglons and deacons of the church have been praying for the souls of the people.
Padhalu paricharakal kodaa a vekta koraku rakshnakoraku pradhancheshtavachinadu.
Not only the whole world is praying for the salvation of the souls.
Mari prabanchamantha rakshnakoraku atmalakshna pradhanchedanime kadu.
So there is contribution of every believer spread all over the world.
Kaavati prati visvaski a swarta pragatinchidaniki mari aadi keta yavabadinadi.
You the messenger, you are a small speck in the whole contribution.
Mari ayaka pani lo ye vartamani kodanatvanti variki konchum bagamundi.
So it is God who does it, that is what he should think.
Mari manu emalochinchala adichesse di devade.
There was a practice of by one brother.
Aka sahodan ki vedamga practice chesalavadu.
Wherever he preaches the word.
Ekadite devanu vaakyadu bodistadu.
When the altar call is given.
Ekadite ayaka altar call yavabartundu.
Cars are distributed afterwards, they are collected.
Mari ayaka thirman patral panchintaravata tiskune mundu.
He will check them.
Mari aavtiskuntu.
And makes a list of the whole people, all the people.
Mari ayavrata a patrikal tiskunadu andar peel rasukunavadu.
And he used to send them to Brother Baxing.
Mari sahodar Baxing garagiriki watni pumpinchavadu.
Dear uncle, I have done, I have done this work, I have preached and so many souls were saved.
Ma uncle neenu illa bodinchinana aneka atmal rakshinchabaddana a peerlani list pumpinchavadu.
Ah, and then Brother Baxing laughed and smiled.
Mari Baxinggar nauta illa chepnadu.
Then when I met him, he said like this.
Neen aina kaliskunapri illa chepnadu.
It is not you, it is God who did that work.
Mari adichesnde new kadu devade a karyam chesnada.
Never ever think that whatever you have done, you have done it.
Kaavati dai chesse, new yedaina chesste, neene chesanu, ane talampu manukondukodadu.
There was one man in Hyderabad.
Hyderabad lo kodu okmanishunadu.
He used to tell me.
Mari aina atu chepptundu.
Whenever I was sent for the ministry to that place.
Pa sahodara palanasthalanik neen paricharakoraku pumpinchabadana.
As the meeting was over, one man came and told me.
Mari akkudi kaipantarata ok sahodarachinata illa chappadu.
Uncle, ye roj vinnam uncle vaakyam.
Uncle ye roj vaakyam vinnam uncle.
Ye roj mir chepthavinnam uncle. There are some people like that.
Kontamandhi prajalila lagundadu.
They try to please the messengers of God.
Mari devanu vartamani kulu valu pogudutavuntar.
Maybe they may take some mileage out of it.
Mari dani dhvara yedavakonta labumpandala.
Ah, you don't praise the messengers of God.
Mari devanu vartamani dai chesse pogudavadu.
What we have to think is, it is God who has done it.
Mari manu alochinchavalsnande, devade dani chesnada.
Everything is the karma and everything is he.
Mari karta karma kriya aine inchinadu.
He said, lo, I am with you always.
Idigone yuga samapthi varaku neenu todugavanna aina cheppinadu.
Now see Mark's Gospel.
Mari mate swarta.
Chapter sixteen.
Padaharajayam.
Verse twenty.
28.
And they went forth and preached everywhere, the Lord working with them and confirming the word with signs following amen. Mark's Gospel sixteen, verse twenty.
Mark swarta padaharajayam 28. Mark swarta padaharu.
Mark's Gospel, chapter sixteen, verse twenty.
Varu bail deri vaakyamantata pragatinchiri, prabhu variki sahakarudai undi venuvanta jarutuvachina chuchikriyalavalna vaakyamunu steraparchichundenu.
No, it was God who had been doing the work through them.
Mari varidhvara prabhu pani cheshta unnadu.
Apostles were just, they were in the hands of God.
Apostello mari devaniyaka hastal lo varunchinadu.
They relied upon the promises God made to them.
Devadu varik chesna vaagdhanal meda var adarpadi unchinaru.
It is because of that, they could turn the world upside down.
Mari dinibatti varu lokani talakrindalu chaygaliginadu.
You should always be conscious of this.
Mari ellapadu yedi gamnikam manam kaligundali.
When you are sharing the word personally.
Mari vekta katanam manu vaakyam panchkunapadu.
Or when you are sharing the word in the assembly.
Mari sangamlo vaakyam panchkuntunapadu.
In any sort of meeting.
Mari yedaina kudikala panchkuntunapadu.
It is God who speaks through you.
Mari devade needwaraa matladutunadu.
There is a wonderful truth, we should realize that.
Yi adbutmaina sachani manam grahinchavalsnava.
Then we will not lift up our, you know, colors and say, I have done it.
Tarav aalaag manam gamnik kaligundte manu collar akkvesi neene chesnadan epudu chappajalamu.
Ah, we have to be very, very careful with this.
Mari yi vishmla manam chala chala jagarta kaligunavalsnava.
It is God who speaks through us.
Mari devade manadwaraa matladutunadu.
Wonderful way he does that.
Mari adbutmaina reethalo aina adichesse vaduka unchinnadu.
But we have to surrender our results.
Aite manlo aina samarpinchikavali.
And yield our results unto him.
Mari aina kumal apaginchikavali.
Then God will do his work.
Mari devadu tanakaryan manadvara cheshta.
So we have read a portion in first Corinthians chapter fifteen, verse fifty-eight.
Mari kurindi padiheno ajayam abeyenmido achinam manam chadukunnam.
What is there?
Rakkrem raivadinadi.
Therefore, my beloved brethren, be steadfast, unmovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord, forasmuch as ye know that your labor is not in vain in the Lord.
Kaagana pre sahodarlaro, mi prayasam prabhunandha vardhamkadan erigi, stirulunu kadarnivarunu prabhu karayabiruddhiyandi yappatiki aashaktila indidi.
Abounding therein, abounding in the work of the Lord.
Prabhu karayabiruddhiyandu.
Always we get involved in the work of the Lord.
Ellapadu manu prabhu karyamandu mari karyani chesse varga untnadu.
You have an expression in Luke's Gospel nineteen, verse thirteen, where it says, occupy till I come.
Mari neen ochu varaku variyavaramu cheddi.
Yeah, until you should be occupied with the things concerning the Lord Jesus Christ.
Kaavati devani pani korakainatvanti vishalam eda manam aashaktikaligavatla nemagila untnali.
Whatever you may be doing.
New emichesstana apaduki.
In your own secular realm, in your jobs and other things.
Mari new ujjagamgani, ni pani gani emichesstana apaduki.
A true servant of God, a true believer of the Lord, in the back of his mind, he is always concerned about the ministry that Lord has committed unto him.
Nizmaina devanisavakudu, nizmaina visvasi ellapadu venakala devanipanigurinchia adira alochinchavaduka unchinnadu.
That means savakudu means, I mean, every believer who is born again.
Mari tirigijenminchina prati visvasi kodaa.
That work is committed to all of us.
Mari yipani andarki apaginchabadinadi.
But God has chosen some people.
Aite devadu kontamandhi airparchikunadu.
They supervise the work.
Mari a pani ni mari karyaniravahana chodadanik.
And there is this spiritual authority over us.
Aade. Aade, okay, aade atme mainatvanti adikkaraan manapayavettinadu.
Yeah, God does things, great things for us.
Devadu goppa karyamlu manukoraku chesstadu.
But you have to yield our results.
Aite manu manu apaginchikavali.
And do the work of the Lord.
Devanipanimanam chayali.
Acts of apostles.
Apostel karyamlu.
Chapter one.
Madatajayam.
Verse eight.
Enmido achinam.
But he shall receive power after that the Holy Ghost is come upon you, and he shall be witnesses unto me, both in Jerusalem and in all Judea and in Samaria and unto the uttermost part of the earth.
Aina nu parishuddhatma meedakochinapadu mir shaktini pondedaru, ganuka mir erishlemlono, yodiyasamriyadeshamlono, bhuddigamntumlo varukuna ku sakshila indrani varutha cheppeno.
It is applicable not only to disciples at that time, to the whole congregation, those who are going to be saved even after that.
Mari yede akkarunatvanti sishilku maatrame kadu taravata akkuna samaajaniki taravata rakshnapandabo var andarki kodachindatvanti di.
We should be witnesses for him.
Mari manamo aina koraku sakshila indali.
We should be boarding and shining witnesses for him.
Mari aina koraku manamo mari prajwalinchetuvanti sakshilaga untnali.
Wherever we move around.
Manu ekadu velna apaduki.
We should portray and picture Lord Jesus Christ through our lives.
Manu jivataldora yesu kristu prabhu varni chupinchavalsnavaaramga pradasinchavalsnavaargavundu.
That is how you show forth God's glory, God's power and God's love.
Mari yi reethiga devaniyaka prema, devaniyaka mahimunu manu varik chupinchavargavundu.
Christ should be seen.
Mari devanikkala velgu pragatinchabat chupinchavada.
As you read the word of God.
Devanivaakyam chavutunapadu.
You will be activated more and more to do the work of the Lord.
Devaniyaka panichedukorakay adikmaina prochaani manam pondevargavundam.
So you have to read, meditate the word of God.
Manu devanivaakyani chadavali, devaniyaka vaakyani janinchal.
As on that subject, I want to tell you, I recommend King James Version English Bible for you.
Mari yi reethiga marivaakyam chadavadani, janinchidani, King James Version chadavali nikmanujeshtavanna.
Telugu Bible you may have.
Telugu Bible lo mir kaligundadu.
Those who are reading English Bible.
Yavrata English Bible kaligundadu.
Do not take NIV or whatever it is, King, King James Version is the version you should read.
Mari ennai miglinivatu kalkani King James Version chadavali nikmanujeshtavanna.
It is closer to the original tongues.
Mari adi mari mari tajma chayvadatvanti adma bashku dagir dagiraga.
There are various expressions which are so powerful.
Mari koni sandarbalu chala mari entho shaktivanthamga mari tajma chayvadnay.
Then when you read it very carefully, God will open up your eyes.
Kaavati chala jagarta gani ochadinatvate devadu manu kanulu terchavaduka untnadu.
See the grandeur in this splendor of God.
Mari devaniyaka ayaka soundariyamu chodandi.
And when you see it.
New chusnapadu.
You are empowered to see it only through the meditation of the word of God, not otherwise.
Mari devaniyaka vaakyad janamavale ne a sangatal manam chodkalukuthamga ne vere vidamga chodale.
So when you are occupied with the things concerning himself.
Mari devanigurichinatvanti pani lo ayaka vishalunu nimaglamayunnapadu.
Your footsteps in the journey are controlled by him.
Niyaka jivita gamnamu ni adugalu aina cheta mari steraparchabartai.
My life has always been dotted by the word of God.
Na yaka jivitum ellapadu devanivaakyam cheta adi nirnichabartundi.
Ah, in several times, several junctures of my life.
Mari chala sandarbalo chala paristhitlo.
There was a time in two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand, 2015.
I have taken so many places in south.
Mari south lo chala pranthalkavellanu.
Andaman port player.
Mari Andaman port player kavellanu.
And then I went to KGF Bangalore.
Mari KGF Bangalore. Mari KGF Bangalore velnannu.
Then another place called Achipattu near Madras.
Mari Madras lo Atipattanay pranthanik velnannu.
Then Chennai, Madras.
Mari tarav Chennai, Madras.
That's one of the places where I went sometimes my road, sometimes my flight, I was very much tired.
Mari.
Came back to a guest house in Perumbur Assembly.
Mari chala pranthalu mattrigintaravata train lo taravata flight lo taravata mari prayanachesse Perumbur anetvanti assembly kochinapadu.
There is a guest house for me, there I stayed.
Mari akkarunna guest house lo neenu mari restiis kuntunadu.
There was a brother who helped me, he served me dinner.
Mari yavrata sahodaru nakakrunchinaru nakudinner saravchessaaru.
Then before sleeping, I was praying like this.
Mari nedrapoye mundu yi reethiga neen pradhantchesnada.
Lord, I am very much tired.
Prabhu varane chala alispoyadu.
Now I want to take rest.
Prabhu aipun neenu vishranti tiskavalan anukundu.
I am going to Delhi, I will take rest, I will only pray and read word of God.
Mari neen Delhi velin taravata vishrantiis kuntanu keavalam vaakyinchadi pradhana maatrame cheskuntan anchepna.
Ah, that is what I will be doing.
Mari.
I will withdraw myself from all the ministry.
Mari neen idimaatrame cheshta neenka paricharillo entamaatrame neenu palipundan anchepna.
I cannot travel anymore.
Neeninki ekua doram prayanam chailadu.
And I said, a lot of word has been preached.
Mari chala vaakyambodinchinadu.
Some songs have been composed, people are singing those songs also.
Mari koni patlenu mari kompochesnana prajal padutavunadu.
I said, it is enough.
Neen anukundan intavarki chalprav.
Lord, I will take rest.
Prabhu varne epudu vishrantiis kuntan.
With those thoughts, I slept.
Mari e twenty talampu kaligunavadu neen padakkvelanu.
Next day morning.
Mercedes.
The brother gave me a cup of coffee.
Mari sahodaru mari cup of coffee charu.
As I was sitting with that coffee.
Mari ayaka coffee thavutundaga.
I asked him to read the word in the calendar of that day.
Adinam calendar lo na vaakyani chadamana sahodarunadigina.
That was eighteenth June nineteen, two thousand nineteen.
Mari padhimdi June 2015.
In the calendar, the verse that he read is like this.
Mari akkarunna calendar lo ye vaakyam raivadinadi.
Romans chapter twelve, verse one, twelve, eleven.
Roma patrika panindajayam padukundachinam.
Romans chapter twelve, verse eleven.
Roma patrika panindajayam padukundachinam.
Not slothful in business, fervent in spirit, serving the Lord.
Chodandi, aashakti vishyallo manjilaka aatmayandu tevartikalavare prabhu ni sevinchudi.
See, what I thought last night.
Mari neenu garichina munduroz raatri emtalanchinadu.
Now what word I am getting in the morning?
Yuvudekalamlo nee emvaakyan pondenadu.
Not slothful in business, fervent in spirit, serving the Lord.
Aashakti vishyallo manjilaka aatmayandu tevartikalavare prabhu ni sevinchudi.
Ah, he said, Lord, sorry.
Prabhu varanukshaminchan chepnadu.
I would like to walk again.
Prabhu varne tirigipanjayalan kuntunadu.
Sorry for my weakness.
Prabhu varna balahinathinabattan.
So I recommitted myself unto the Lord.
Tirigene neen prabhu pani korakay neen apaginchikunadu.
And I continued the work that Lord has committed unto me.
Devadu nakapaginchinapani chesstune neen mundukvelta untnadu.
That is how you will be guided by his word as you are occupied with him.
Mari devanigurichinatvanti talampu mir kaligunapadu a vaakyamudhvara aina mal nadipinchavaduka unchinnadu.
Yeah, every time, at the right junctures in life, he will guide you.
Mari prati manajivitalo achetvanti prati sandarbalo kodaa saraynavidanamla aina mal nadipinchavadu.
Serving with the Lord along with the people who are with me.
Mari naatavna varutha kalisin neen prabhu ni sevistavunchinadu.
Ah, two thousand twenty.
2021.
I toward the end of that year.
Mari a saachram akarlo.
One day I was reading, I read this verse.
Mari okdinani yevaakyan inchadina.
Acts fifteen thirty-six.
Apostel karyalu padiheno ajayam uppayarachinam.
Acts chapter fifteen, verse thirty-six.
Apostel karyalu padiheno uppayaru.
And some days after Paul said unto Barnabas, let us go again and visit our brethren in every city where we have preached the word of the Lord and see how they do.
Apostel karyal padihenup, koni dinamalaina taravata ye patnamlo prabhu vaakyamunu prachurintumo, aya prati patnamlo na sahodarli adukutirigaveli, var ellagunnaru manu chutmani, paulu baranbato anenu.
See, many times you will be reading the word of God.
Chala sahalu manam devanivaakyan chavutav.
But certain times, God highlights certain words.
Mari a vaakyan.
Special focus on a particular word.
A vaakyani chavutanapadu koni sandarbalo a bagunlo koni bagalu manu prachekumainavidanamlo chupistadu.
Here Paul tells Barnabas.
Ekadapaulu baranbato chepptunadu.
Let us go again and visit all the places where we have preached.
Mari manu.
The word of the Lord and see how they do.
Mari manamu tirigivelim manu ekadu ekadite vaakyam pragatinchnamo var ellagunnaru choddaman chepnadu.
I shared with our brethren in Delhi.
Mari Delhi lo na sahodaruto neen chepnadu.
This is how the word of God came to me.
Yi reethiga devanivaakyamna yadukochindi.
Now I would like to visit the smallest and every assembly.
Mari prati chinnasangam kodan neenu velichchodala ne anukuntunadu.
Finally pray.
Mari dai chesse pradhanchendi.
I want to tell you for the glory of God, very next day onwards.
Mari devanuhimukorakay neen chepptunadu marcity dinamninchay.
As if God is confirming this word.
Mari devadu yaka vaakyani nicheparistu.
Many requests have confirmed various corners of India.
Mari India lo nalumolunchi anek mainatvanti manu lu nakavastav.
Also London and America.
Mari London inchia America inchikoda.
You will come and minister unto us.
Dai chesse mir vachimaaku parichariche.
So many calls, so many requests.
Mari enno pilipilo enno manu lu nakavastavunay.
So that is how, from then on, I have been moving out.
Mari akaarnan appadininchay illagam neenu mari tirigutuchustu parijaricheshta.
Hardly I stay in Delhi.
Mari chala takkuva neenu Delhi lo undadi.
So so many places I go and praise God's people.
Mari chala pranthalkavelline neen devaniyaka prajalnu procha paristavuntnadu.
Let us all read this verse again.
Mari yi vaakyani manandramukalichchadukuntam.
Acts fifteen thirty-six.
Apostel karyalu padiheno uppayar.
And some days after Paul said.
Andram kalichchadukuntam koni dinamalaina taravata ye patnamlo prabhu vaakyamunu prachuruparchitimo aya patnamlo na sahodarli adukutirigiveli var ellagunnaru chutmani, paulu baranbato anenu.
See, the burden is, see how they do, let us go and see how they do.
Mari var ellagunnaru manu chutmani adi baram.
We have preached the word.
Manu devanivaakyan bodincham.
Now what is their performance?
Aite a vaakyankavali alasponinchina.
How did they respond to the word of God?
Devanu vaakyankavali alas pratispandincharu.
For the church to grow, there are two things very, very essential.
Mari sangamlo rendu vishalu chala pramukhyamainatvanti.
Spiritual nourishment of the church.
Sangamuyaka atme ya pochnakoraku.
And secondly, spiritual response of the church.
Mari sangamo atme maina pratispandana koraku.
Word of God is being preached to us.
Mari devaniyaka vaakyamo manaku pragatinchabartundi.
Now what is the spiritual response of the church? That is very, very important.
आइते संगमलो लिंची आ वाक्यान कनुन आत्म यमाइन प्रतिस्पन्नन ईरीतिका
They are only hearers and appreciators that will not do anything good
देवन वाक्यान विनी अभिनंदिस्ते अभिनंदिंच अलागुन्ते दानवलो पुयोगमेम
Ah you have to do the word of God
आलु वाक्यमु चेप्पन रीतिका चेसे वारग
You have to appropriate the word of God
देवन एक का वाक्यान ने मन अनुदिन जीवतान का अन्वय
You have to put that word into practice
आ वाक्यान मनम क्रिया रोपकंगा प्रगटिंचे
Word of God says like this
देवन वाक्यम लाजप्तुंदी
So I do like this
मरे ने ईरीतिका चेस्ता
Word of God guides me like this
देवन वाक्यम लानन नड्डिस्तुंदी
I will live like this
ने ईरीतिका नड्डिस्तान
योरन निदर्भोतुनारा
योरे निदर्भोतुनारा
कल्लु मुस्कुंटे निदर्भोतुच
कल्लु मुस्कुंटे निदर्भोतुच
इसमें केंट भुक्तायासो
मरे भुक्तायास मंटर
मंच एनविजनर एनविजनर नॉन विजिटेरियन
मंच नॉन विजिटेरियन
Ah you have to be alert in the presence of Allah
देवन एक का सन्निदलो मनम गमनेक कलिगे उंडाली
So when you are occupied with the things concerning the Lord Lord in a mysterious way he will guide you, encourage you to continue to do that work
सब एप्पड आइते देवन गुरिंचिनाट्वंते विश्वाल गुरिंची मनम आशक्ति चुपिस्तामो आलोचिस्तामुंतम देवड़ मल प्रोचा परिचि अद्भुतमाइन रीतलो तन मार्गनलो मल नड्डिंचे वाड़ग
So now how we should do that work?
मरे ईरीतिका मनम देवन एक का पनिचयाली
Here in first Corinthians chapter fifteen verse fifty eight
मरुकोरिंदी पदिहेन अज्जम याबे एनम्द वच्चलो
That word recommends that we should abound more and more in the work of the Lord
देवन एक का वाक्यम चेस्तुंदी प्रभु कार्याव्यव्योद्यान ये पट्टीकी मनम आशक्तिलाई उंडाली
As we abound more and more in the work of the Lord
एप्पड आइते प्रभु एक कार्याव्यव्योद्यान आशक्ति कलिगे उंडामो
We should also be careful in dealing with the word of God
मरे देवन एक का वाक्यान ने मनम प्रगटिंचे विष्णल कोड जागर्थ कलिगे उंडाम
Ah what, how we are doing it?
मरे ईरीतिका मनम जेस्तनाम
Ah how is it beneficial to the congregation?
मरे आ वाक्यम ईरीतिका समाजान को पुयोग पड़तुंदी
It is not just emptying our head
मन मनलो न ज्ञानान ने तलम्पलो वाले मल कुमरिंचे तम काद
God's word gives, will give us an opportunity to minister relevant to the situation prevailing
कवटि देवन एक का वाक्यम मनक गप्पा अवकाश्मिस्तुंदी अकड़ उंडेट वेंटी परिस्थितिकी अनुगुणंगा वार ने प्रोचा परिच रानक अवकाश
God will give that word
देवड़े आ वाक्यान मनक इस्ताद
Will you prepare yourself in notes and all that that will not get connected to the congregation at all?
मरे नियंत्रण येदो कोणी वाक्याल रास्कन सिद्धपड़ते अधि समाजान के मात्रम उपयोग करंगा उंडाद
When you occupy yourself with the things concerning himself
मरे देवन गुरिंचिनाट्वंते विश्वालो नी आशक्ति कलिगे उंड
He will give such a word which is very very essential to some families or some individuals
मरे योर एक कुटम्बाल काइते प्रामुख्यमो योर काइते आवसरम अट्टी वाक्यम देवड़ मनक इच्छे वाड़ग
Ah that is relevant because in the scripture we find
मरे आत्म यमानम चूस्ते
God sent Moses, God sent Elijah, God sent his prophets
मरे देव
And say thus saved their order, relevant to the situation prevailing at that time in the midst of children of Israel
मरे देवड़ो इसरायल प्रजल्दरकी मोशियानो मरे एलिशानो देवन प्रावक्तल पंबिचन नपड़ यहोवा एलागु सलविचनाडन वार चेप्पन अकड़ परिस्थितिकी तगनट्टिगा वार चप्ता
Yeah God gives the word
मरे देवड़ो वाक्यान इस्ताद
In some places when I go to northeast
मरे नॉर्थ ईस्टलो कोणी प्रांतालक ने न वेलन
That local brethren will come and tell me
अकड़ न स्थानिक सहोदरला याद्दको चे चेप्पनार
Before the meetings
मरे आयक कुड़ीकलक मुंद
Brother, brother, nobody gives thanks, brother, please don't
प्रवा योर आकर सहोदर योर टाइट योर ट्लेद पदो दसंबागुन दाईचेस्तान में बोधिंचन न चेप्पन
I said नुजे पिये ने जपन
नुजे पे ने ने जपन
You don't have to tell
मी वे चपवल्सन आवसर
What the messenger should give
मरे वर्तमान कड़े मी वाले न चपवल्सन
If he is the God's messenger
आयन देवन वर्तमान कड़ा इत्ते
Spirit of God will put such burden in his heart which is relevant, I want to tell you this Relevant to the situation prevailing in the families of God and in the individuals' life
कवटि ने चेप्पे देंटे आयक का अकड़ संगमलो उंडेट वेंटी परिस्थितल का अनुगुणंगा अकड़ न कुटम्बा अक्करल आवसर अनुगुणंगा विश्वासल का अनुगुणंगा आवसरमाइन एट वेंटी वर्तमानमु देवन एक का आत्म आ वर्तमान कुन्यका हृदयमलो पेट्ये दिगा उंडुंदी
God sent Nathan to David
मरे नातानु दाविद दगरकी देवड़ पंबिचनाड
To tell him, thou art the man
मरे नी आ मनुष्यड़वे अन चपड़ान का पंबिचन
Ah that is how our preaching should be
मरे ईरीतिका मन एक का वर्तमानम उंडाली
And don't be reluctant to preach certain things which may displease somebody
मरे एक कुंत मन की मरा आयसम कलिंचे ट्वेंटी विश्वाल मन बोधिंच कोड
We have a favorite word smiles related that in Galatians one ten
मरे गलतिल क्रासिन पत्रिक मत अज्जम पद वच्चन
Ah smiles related
Ah smiles, ah smiles कर चदनार गलते ओकटे पद
If I please men I cease to be a servant of Christ
ने मंशनल संतोष पर्चिवाड़ नाईते कृष्ट दासुड़न काकपो
Ah there are a lot of people, they pray, praise assemblies and praise people and give some decorated, do some icing and then go away Ah, ah, what a deep message he gave
कवटि कुंत मन दे मरे वर्तमान कुल कुंत मन दे वन अकड़ंता मरे यें जेस्तरंते अकड़ बोधकुलु मरे संगालु अवी अंधंगा कान्पड्डन डेकोरेट चेसे वारग वर्तमान कुनी अंकरेच इधि प्रोचा परिच वाड़ग माट्ला
That will not yield anything
मरे दान वाला ये उपयोगम लेद
You have to spend much time
मरे नी एकु आ समयम कडपवल्स
मावालक जप्तुंतन
ने मावालक चप्ता
You have to get a message from the Lord, you should have prasavvaidan
मरे देवन एक का वर्तमानम पंदालंते नी प्रसववैदन पड़ाली
Ah such a thing you should struggle in the presence of the Lord
देवन एक का सन्निदल अट्वंते प्रसववैदन पड़ाली
Ah ना दिल्लीले आदिकान निंची रेवेलेशन वाड़क गप्पा कोटि बोसर
मरे कुंत मन जप्ता आदिकान निंची प्रगटन वारकु नाक देल्सु न चपवल्स लेद न चप्ता
There should be a message
मरे अकड़ वर्तमानम उंड
There should be some communication which will benefit the congregation
मरे समाजान की लाभकर्माइन एट वेंटी वर्तमानम उंडाल
In order that we may do that
मरे आरीतिका मनम चेनट्लो
We should be sound in doctrine
मरे आयक बोधलो मनम अमरे स्त्रमगा उंडाली आरोग्य करंग
Titus chapter two
तीत पत्रिका
Titus chapter two
तीत पत्रिका रेंडो अज्जायम
Verse one
मदित वच्चन तीत क्रासिन पत्रिका रेंडो अज्जायम मदित वच
Titus chapter two verse one But speak thou things which become sound doctrine
नी वो हित बोध का अनुकोलमाइन न संगतलु बोधिंचुम
Sound doctrine
मरे हित बोध
You should understand the word of God in the right perspective
मरे देवन एक का वाक्यान ने सरैन दृत्त्वदमलो नी वन एन अर्धम जेस्काव
And you understand it in relevance of what has been said there
मरे अकड़ येम चपवड़े इंदो आ संदर्भान का अनुगुणंगा तगिनट्टिगा न अर्धम जेस्कुं
And you should be correct in doctrinal preaching doctrines of the Bible
अप्पड़ु बाइबल सिद्धांताल ने सरैन विधानमलो नु बोधिंचे रानिक अधा अनुगाह उंडुंदी
Once, one of the elders, you know, her own assembly, he is now with the Lord
मरे मायका समाजलो कप्पड्डुनाड इप्पड़ आयन प्रभु तो उंड
Ah I, somebody contacted him
मरे योर आतन की मरे कांटेक्ट चेस
Lord, my wife is troubling me
सहोदर ना बारी ने निबंद पड़तुंदी
I'm not able to be happy with her
मने न आमितो मरे संतोषंग उंडलाक पोतन
Now can I marry another woman?
ने वेर एक श्री ने पिलिजेस्को वच्चा
God is understanding
मरे अधि आयन एक का अवगाहन
He comes and asks this elder
मरे आयन अच्छी आप्पड्डन अडिग्न
Ah elder comes and asks me, comes and asks me once
आप्पड्डन आदेकर को वच्चे ओक्सार अडिग्न
Jesse
जेसी
This elder said, they can know they should have one wife, others can have any number
मरे पद्डलु परिचारुकलाईते ओका बारी ने कलिगे उंडाले नुंद कदा मिगल्लो इंकोक बारी ने कलिगे रेंडो बारी
See that word he could understand from that
मरे आतनो आ वाक्यम निंची दान ने अर्धम
I said, how can you say that?
ने नान नु ईरीतिका ला चप्पगलो
You cannot do that
नु रीतिका चेक
Tell him that he is forbidden
मरे अधि निषेध मनु आयन तो जप
So some people, those who are well learned, they pose, but they commit mistakes like this
मरे मेम एन्नो ज्ञानवंतलुमु बानेर्चुकुनाम देवन वाक्यम न चप्ता रगन तपुल जेस्ता
The clock looks towards you
मरे आयक मंद आ मी वाइप चूस्ता
Congregation depends upon you
आयक समाजमु वर्तमान कुन्य मेद आधार पड़तुंदी
In order that you may give right guidance
मरे सरैन एट वेंटी नड्डुपुद्दल वार किच्चिट्ट कोरक
You should be well versed in the scripture, not this
मरे नु देवन वाक्यमलो मरे बागा अवगाहन कलिगिन वाड़ग
You should be thorough with the word of God
देवन एक का वाक्यम क्षणमगा नु एरिगिन वाड़ग
Suddenly some corners, some verses, some questions come for you
मरे अनुकोण रीतिका समाजलो लिंची कोणी प्रश्न निकोस्ता
You should not answer that out of your head
मरे नी कुंडेट वेंटी तललो न ज्ञानम बट्टी वाट्कु नु समाज
You should answer from the scripture
नी लेखनान आधारम जेस्कु
Word of God says like this
देवन वाक्यम ईरीतिका चेप्त
There ends the discussion
मरे अकड़ आयक डिस्कशन पूर्त
Ah पूर्त वार, but then how you should quote the word of God
आरीतिका देवन एक का वाक्यान मनम ऐति चुपिंच
So how can you have sound doctrine?
मरे ईरीतिका ई हित बोधन मनम कलिगे उंडगलम
Ponder upon the word of God
देवन एक का वाक्यान मनम जानिंचे
Don't just read and leave it
मरे चदवेसी बिच्ची पड़तुंत
Think about it
देवन वाक्यम गुरिंच
More and more
मरे इनका अधिकमगा अधिक
Ponder upon it
समयम दरिकन आपरला दान
And then God will give you several thoughts
मरे देवड़ अनेक माइन तलम्पलो दान गुरिंच इच्छे
I am telling off my personal experience
ना व्यक्तिका तानुबुनलो चेप्तन
As I read the word of God in the morning
वे कालम ने देवन वाक्यम चद
Till I drive to my office
ने न ऑफिस के वेल्टुं
Long time ago I had an ambassador car
नाक चाला कालम केतत अंबास्टर कार
I used to drive in that
आ कार ड्राइव चेसे
And I keep pondering upon the word of God
मरे देवन एक का वाक्यान आलोचिंचुकुंता कार
While pondering, I want to tell you, I did not meet any accident
मरे आरीतिका ने जेस्तन अप्पड़ ये एक्सीडेंट ने गुरिकाले
Ah God takes care of you
देवड़ो ने न जागर्थ पूछ
And suddenly some, like a flash, some thought comes
मरे वेंटने वोका मर्थ फ्लाश वच्चन अट्लोक तलम्पोच
Ah the word that I meditated on that, some flash comes
मरे ने एन एते वाक्यान जानिस्ता नान अंदल
Then I praise God
अप्पड़ देवन ने स्तुति
Then I said, the moment I go to the office, I will write down this in my
मरे ऑफिस के वेल्न वेंटने आ तलम्पु ने न रास्पेट कुनान
By the time I reach, this is gone That thought goes away
आ तलम्प वेल्प
Then I keep thinking very seriously
मरे अप्पुन ने एन्नो देरगंगा आलोचिंचन
Trying to think what, where I started, how it came and now and all that, but I don't get it
मरे तरवाता ईरीतिका दोचिंदी अला आलोचिंचन तरवात ने न
While driving back
मरे तिरिगे वनक प्रयान
At the same spot I get there again, same thought God gives me
मल्ला तिरिगा अधे तलम्प देवन ना ज्ञापकम जेस्त
Ades talmlo
अधे अधे वेले एट वेंटे तिरिगेले अधे तलम्पलो ज्ञापकम जेस्त
Let's try forget immediately, park the car
मरे वेंटने कार पाके पार्क चेस
Then immediately I note down
ईमे वेंटने ने रास्पेट
That is how my Bible is full of notations
मरे आरीतिका नायक बाइबल गुरिंच ने न चेसे
Revelations that come to me
मरे आ प्रत्यक्षतन आयद्दको
While pondering upon the word of God
देवन वाक्यान ने न जानिंचे
Oh it is a wonderful thing, I get fascinated, captivated
मरे
I am overwhelmed by the word of God
मरे आरीतिका देवन वाक्यम बट्लो नाक एकु आच्छा मरा आशक्ति कलगुता वचिंदी
So you should be sound in doctrine
नी वन एन कोड अहित बोध विष्ण, हित बोध कलिगे उंड
What is the doctrine of Christ?
मरे कृष्ट एक का सिद्धांतम एमिट
Ah you see, that is there, we have Hebrews chapter six
हिब्रिल क्रासिन पत्रिका
Verses one and two
मरे आरो अज्जम ओप्टर रेंडो वच्चन
Therefore leaving the principles of the doctrine of Christ Let us go on to perfection and laying again, for laying again foundation of repentance from dead works And of faith toward God, of the doctrine of baptism, and laying on our hands, and resurrection of the dead, and eternal judgment
हिब्रिल क्रासिन पत्रिका आरो अज्जम मदित रेंडो कवटि निज्योक्रियल न विडिचे मारुमानस्पोंदिटियो देवन यंदली विश्वासमुनु, भापतिस्मल गुर्चिन बोधयो, अस्तनिक शैपनमु, मृत्युल पुनर्दानमु निच्यमाइन तीर्प्पो अनुपुनादी मरलावेका, कृष्टुन गुर्चिन मोलोपदेश्यमानी संपूर्णम अट्टुक सागिपो
Ah here we have the doctrine of Christ, very clearly mentioned
मरे कृष्ट एक का बोध आयकड़ मन चूस्ता
Two, three couplets we have
एकड़ा मुड़ जतलु नाई
Preparation, repentance from dead works
मरे निज्योक्रियल न विडिचे मारुमानस्पोंदिट
And faith toward God
देवन यंदली विश्वासम
Secondly
रेंडो जत
Doctrine of baptism
भापतिस्मल गुर्चिन बोध
Doctrine of laying on our hands
अस्तनिक शैपनमु
Third pair
मरे मुड़ जत
Resurrection of the dead
मृत्युल पुनर्दानम
And eternal judgment
निच्यमाइन तीर्प्पो
This is the truth that we acknowledge and we are practicing and preaching
मरे इधे सच्चान ने मनम अंगीकरिंची अधे सच्चान ने मनम मरे पाटिस्तु अधे सच्चान ने बोधिस्त
And we should be very strong in this, we should not have any doubt whatsoever
मरे इंदलो मनम चाला द्रोडंगा बलंगा उंडल देन विष्ण म ये विदमाइन न संदेहमु मनम कलिगे
Then God's name will be glorified
मरे आरीतिका चेस्तन अप्पड़ देव नामु महिम पर्च
So when you are equipped with the word of God
एप्पड आइते देवन एक का वाक्यम चेतन नु निम्ब
God will also give the communicating skills to preach the word of God
मारे देवड़ो ईरीतिका वाक्यान्ने प्रकटिंचालो दानिक कावल्सन नाई पुण्यमु ज्ञानान्यान इच्छेवाड़
Even at the tabernacles, building of the tabernacle
मारे प्रत्यक्ष गोदारण्नी निर्मिंच्या अपड़
When God chose Basilial and Aholiab
मारे बेसलेल्नो अहोलियाबुनु देवड़े आप्पर्च्युकुनाड
There is some fragment mentioned here.
अद्भुत रीतिका अकड़ोक माटा मारे चप्पोबड़े इंदे
The Exodus chapter 35
मारे निर्गमाकान्नमो 35 अज्जायम
Verse 34
34 अवचन
And he has put in his heart that he may teach both he and Aholiab, the son of Ashikamash, of the tribe of Don.
35
35, verse 34.
निर्गमाकान्नमो 35, 34 अतरु दानु गोत्रिकड़नु अहीसामा कुमाड्यान्ना अहोलियाबुनु इतरलोकु नेहर्पुनाट्लो वार्की बुद्धि पुट्टिंचेनु
इतरलोकु नेहर्पुनाट्लो
इतरलोकु नेहर्पुनाट्लो
Ah, that is essential.
मारे इदि चाला प्रामुख्य
Not only you have a mass of great knowledge
मारे गोप्पा ज्ञानम कालिगियों डाल मात्रमय कादो
But you should be able to communicate that knowledge to the people of God for the benefit and the blessing of the people.
मारे संगस्तली अक्का क्षयमुमो अब्रुद्ध निमित्तमय आ ज्ञानान्नी वार्की मनम प्रकटिंच्याट्वंति नाई पुण्यम कालिगियों डाल
The first thing is sound doctrine.
मट्टमटी हित बोध
You should be very, very clear on these things.
मारे ई देन आयक्का बोध विष्णमे चाला मारे सरैन अवगाहन कालिगियों मनम उंडाल
Secondly
रेंडो अवचन
You should be sound in faith.
मारे विश्वासम विष्णमय मनम स्त्रमगा उंडाल
Titus chapter 2
तीत पत्रिका
Again, chapter 2
रेंडो अज्जायम
Verse 2
रेंडो अवचन
Titus chapter 2, verse 2.
तीत पत्रिका रेंडो अज्जायम रेंडो अवचन
That the aged man be sober, grave, tempered, sound in faith, in charity, in patience.
मारे एलयनिका वृद्धलो मितानुबवंगलवारनु मान्यलो स्वस्थ बुद्धि गलवारनु विश्वास प्रेम सहनमलयंदु लोपम लेनिवाराय इंडवल्नन्यो
So, we pick up that word, sound in faith is very, very essential.
मारे विश्वास विष्णमलो लोपम लेनिवाराय इंडवल्नन्यो
Sound means full of faith.
मारे आयक्का संपूर्णमयना विश्वासम कालिगियों
You should be able to depend upon him in totality.
संपूर्णंगा आयनमेदा मनम आधारपड़न वारगा उंडाल
What do we read in 1 Corinthians 5:7?
मारे रेंडो करंदी आयदा अज्जम येड़ावचला मनम एन चौथ
Ah, चल चाल मनकी
चाल मनकी चेप्प
Ah, ठी 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 1 Corinthians 5:7
रेंडो करंदी आयदा अज्जायम येड़ावचन
Salu
आर तेलुगला आरो अवचन मुंदे वेलचूपवल्न काका विश्वासम वल्ने नड़च्कुनच्चन नाम
Ah, you walk by faith, not by sight.
वेलचूपवल्न काका विश्वासम वल्ने नड़च्कुनच्चन नाम
Lot of old went by sight.
मारे लोकमान्ता कोर चूसे दान चूसे दान
Lot, lot